December 12th, City Council Meeting to Order. I'd like to welcome those who are joining us in audience in person and those who join us remotely. At this time, we'll ask Pastor Gilz Blankenship from Snyder Memorial Baptist Church, Pastor Blankenship, pardon me for the mispronunciation. If we could all please stand for the invocation and then remain standing as we repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Oh God, who makes all things new, who is close, who makes your presence known in moments defined by joy and hope, by unexpected kindness and sacrificial love, and who especially draws near when decisions are hard, when challenges loom, when grief consumes, and when peace seems like a distant dream at best. You are here with us tonight. And so, would you make us new? Would you fill these next moments for those who have gathered here? Would you fill them with renewed purpose and compassionate hope for this city and for each other? Give fresh strength, oh God, to shoulder both the burdens and joys of serving this community. Guard hearts, minds, and mouths that we may listen, and speak or keep silent, and act with wisdom. And when tough decisions face those living in our city, where daily challenges are met with vacant stares or rising frustration, when grief consumes those in our districts or on our doorsteps, in those moments and seasons, I ask, oh God, that you would fortify these members of City Council in their work and witness, in their love and courage and passion to make a difference, to be ambassadors of peace, the hands and feet of love, and to stand as those who make the rough places smooth and point a way through the wilderness. These things, we pray, oh God, giver of light and life and every good gift, the one who makes all things new. Amen and amen. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Blankenship, thank you for that wonderful prayer. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry over at Snyder?
Yes, sir. My name is Giles Blankenship. As Mayor Colvin has said, I'm the Minister of Worship at Snyder Memorial Baptist Church here in Fayetteville, and I get to serve primarily a contemporary worship experience that we have at 8:40 on Sunday mornings. We just finished our annual singing Christmas tree, and we're able to raise $13,000 to give to area food banks, and so we were glad to cut those checks this past week. We're getting ready for Christmas Eve services at Snyder. We just welcomed a new pastor at Snyder after John Cook retired, and so we're excited. Blake Binge has been on the ground for just a little over a month, and excited to have Blake Binge come as our senior pastor. And then just one more thing I'll mention that we're excited about at Snyder is partnering with the Welcome House Community Network. And since we've done that, we've officially been able to come alongside refugees and immigrants, two families from Afghanistan and one from Syria, to provide temporary housing when they come into the country. And so, we're proud about that and that ongoing work. And if you wanted to hear more about that, some of the workers with Welcome House will actually be in our worship services this Sunday. So, anyway, that's a little bit about us.
Well, thank you. It sounds like you guys are certainly busy. We appreciate you joining us this evening, and thank you for the good work you're doing in our community, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you for this opportunity.
Give Pastor a round of applause. Counselor, at this time, I'll go for announcements. I'll go to Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, not really so much of announcement, but just acknowledge that this will be our last meeting for the year, and just wanted to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to those. We pray that God would bless you and that you would have a safe holiday period from your City Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pretty much wanted to say the same. I'm thankful for all the constituents of the 208,000 that we have here in the city of Fayetteville. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your generosity, and more importantly, thank you for entrusting in us to make your city a better place where we can live, work, and recreate. But on top of that, I'd like to thank the City Manager and the City Attorney for leading this wonderful team that moves Fayetteville forward. But they are not just the team, the Divisional Iron Team. I'd like to thank all of the staff, all of the Police Department, the Fire Department, whether you're Stormwater, or Parks and Rec, or Transit. You guys are the unsung heroes, which makes Fayetteville what it is today and what it will be tomorrow. So, on behalf of myself, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's, and I pray that God will continue to bless you with his grace, his mercy, and his peace.
No, thank you, Councilmember Thompson. At this time, we will move to Item 5.0, City Manager Report. Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'd ask if Assistant Chief Nallett and Assistant Chief Brayden could come, stand at the front. As many of you may have heard already, we are recruiting for our next police chief here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and it gives me great pleasure to say that our top finalist for the position are folks that are very familiar to many of us in the community, Assistant Chief Brayden and Assistant Chief Nallett. And I'm always saying that this, I do it in alphabetical order, not in order of one thing or the other. And so, I'd ask them, as they did last week, if they just wanted to take a second to just say, tell the people on TV who they are. After they finish, I'll come back and give a few more remarks, Mayor.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Kim Brayden. I'm the current Assistant Chief over Field Operations, which encompasses the Patrol Division and the Investigative Division of the Police Department. I've been serving the Fayetteville community for over 27 years. I began my career here as a patrol officer. I worked in Zone 1, which is the Murkison Road Corridor. Over the years, I've served in different areas within the department, and I really, you know, have enjoyed my service as a city of Fayetteville and all the things I've learned and experiences that it's offered to me. Just a little bit about myself, I'm the son of a retired service member out at Fort Bragg. He eventually went on to be the Chief of Police back in his hometown. I stayed here and continued on my service with the Fayetteville Police Department. I have a brother who just got elected as sheriff in Webster County, Kentucky. He's served 22 years as a Kentucky State Police Officer. So, you know, service runs through my family. My wife, Elizabeth, she's a small business owner here in the city of Fayetteville, so I have roots that hold me here. I have two grown children. They've moved on, but they were raised here in the Fayetteville area. I have a son who's an actual engineer in Charlotte, and my daughter is actually in school, and she has her own small, she makes jewelry, has her own little small online jewelry store. So, that's just a little bit about me, and I'm sure we'll get a little further in depth tomorrow when we do our official introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, Council Manager, Jim Nallett, we all know each other at this point. I've been here 23 years. I've been married to my wife 13 years. And matter of fact, she corrected me because I said 15 years to the paper. She made sure that I knew it was 13 years. She said, "Don't push it. We've been together 15 years, but it's only 13 years that we've been married." I've been, like Chief Brayden, I've been with the Fayetteville Police Department for a long time, and we've worked various places throughout the organization that prepared us to be at this point in our careers. The reality is, is the best title I hold is I'm the husband to Robin and the father to Andrew. My wife is a preschool ministry coordinator at Village Baptist Church. My son goes to school there. We live in the city. My wife is born and raised there. As you can tell by my accent, I'm not. I'm from Providence, Rhode Island. I was brought here through the military in 1993 when I got out of the 82nd in 1999. Decided not to shovel snow and work in the family business, which is third-generation police officer. My dad was a police officer for 36 years in Providence, Rhode Island. My mom, or my stepmom was a police officer for 28 years in Providence, Rhode Island, and her father was a police officer prior to that in Providence, Rhode Island. So, this is the family business. We're either nurses or police officers. I didn't, I did the medic stuff in the military, so I decided not to do that on the civilian side. But I'm excited. I'm humbled by the opportunity to stand before you and humbled by the opportunity to lead this amazing organization. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank both of you guys.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Mr. Mayor, as was alluded by the Assistant Chiefs, tomorrow, in this room, at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a community interview or type forum where they will introduce themselves and give a little bit more about their background and their desires to be chief. In addition, there are opportunities for the public to submit questions that they will also ask, be asked, and will answer tomorrow as well. So, looking forward to that. The next one, I'd like to give an update, Mayor and Council, on the ShotSpotter forums that were held last week, two in person and one virtually. Also, between the three sessions, I would probably say safely about 100 people participated, or thereabouts. There were a lot of questions for which ShotSpotter has agreed that they will provide answers to, and once we receive those answers, we will, of course, disseminate and publish that information. But in addition to those questions and the information that was shared, I know that several councilmembers also had an opportunity to attend, and I think the consensus of what I've heard from some of the councilmembers, when we move forward, is that we will update the community and the council, of course, on a quarterly basis on the use of ShotSpotter. We will also be tracking to see whether or not ShotSpotter helps us with our response to, our times in a response situation. We'll also be tracking and hopefully reporting out, as appropriate, on the number of complaints that may arise from the use of ShotSpotter, if any exist. And also, we'll be, of course, continuing to provide council with information on our clearance rate and any other crime reduction strategies that we have. But based upon the feedback that I received from the staff, it was, they were very well attended, a lot of good dialogue, but Mayor and Council, if there's anything that I missed in my list, I'd welcome taking that as well from you as well at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, and, you know, thank all of the citizens and other participants during the community conversations. Very intense, very passionate discussions, and I did have a few things, I think you hit a few of them, that I heard. I was taking notes while the conversations were going on about, you know, there were a couple of citizens who wanted to know if this technology actually improved the response time, would it be beneficial in that respect? Also, there were concerns about whether this would set up conditions for possible confrontation between the citizens and the police. So, tracking citizens' complaints, you know, there are metrics that we can use to see if there's any correlation between that, also with the clearance or the solving of crimes and overall crime reduction. I mean, I think the citizens spoke loud and clear this last election about public safety being an issue. I took a few notes while we were preparing for the meeting. Just this weekend, over the last three days, there were shootings on Bordeaux, Cud Street, Long Star, Rafer Road, and Independence Drive, three of which were fatal. I think everybody has the same goal, which is to create a safer city, community. You know, sometimes we disagree, may not disagree on how we get there, but I think the City Council, regardless of which side of this issue, we all want a better, safer community to live. So, as we work through this, we did commit, I told the citizens that I did speak to, I would bring that information back, share it with council from what I've heard, make sure that we can track and use metrics that address those concerns where possible and feasible. And I wanted to add that in addition to the report due out that you gave just a moment ago. Council, any other comments, questions regarding?
If I could, you know, I happened, had the opportunity to attend the Kiwanis Recreation Center presentation, and like you said, it was very intense, very involved. Had a great opportunity to talk with citizens when they adjourn on the outside in the forum part of the Rec Center. Very, very great questions. A lot of folk were glad that it would be on a trial basis, just to see how this tool can help improve with crime prevention. So, it was a good opportunity to hear from the citizens, and I look to see us going forward, sir.
All right. Mr. Manager, you had any other follow-up statements, questions, comments? Okay. All right. Council moving to Item 6.0, the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right. So, and Council, we'll try our iPads tonight, see how technology is doing us, but right now, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? And for this one, we will try to vote on the iPads. We'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting. All right. Item 7.0 is the consent. And we'll use the iPads for that. Can we have motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve, sir.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Mayor Protem to approve consent. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting. Item 8.0 is the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes each to address the City Council issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be under the public hearing, we ask that you please reserve your comments to the public hearing section. Speakers, we ask that you would please be courteous in their language and presentation. Shout refrain from any personal attacks. Those seated in the audience, please refrain from clapping, yelling, or audio expressions of approval or disapproval of the comments made during the forum. Failure to abide by these rules may subject the offender to be removed from council chambers. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address. Then you'll be, your time will begin. 30 seconds, you'll be, you'll hear a ding, and then at the end of your time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time or engage in dialogue with the speakers. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, Mayor. We have 15 people signed up to speak this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Gary Gerald's. Mr. Gary Gerald's. Not present. Our second speaker is Mr. Tommy Harding.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Dawkins and the council members. My name is Tommy Harding, and I live at 6848 Fern Creek Place. Let me explain a little bit about who I am. Back when I was a teenager in Brooklyn, New York, I was a gangbanger, what they call it today. I was a gang member in the midst of the late 70s, and then when the 80s came, I got myself mixed up in organized crime. I kind of graduated, but I'm not proud of that at all, not one bit. My reason for being here, first of all, is I want to say I support and applaud the Fayetteville Police Department. That's what I do. I applaud the Police Department, okay? I was here September 12th because I want to help. I think that I could be a very good tool trying to help these young people that are committing these crimes. See, they're at a crossroads in their life, not knowing if they should go that way or this way, okay? Jail or cemetery or education and knowledge. I want to get that person to get some education and knowledge. Mr. Dawkins is aware of the book that I had written about my life, and right now, it's being documented, but that's not the reason why I'm here. I am here because I want to spread the word around the country. This is my home. It's been my home for 26 years. A lot of our young people don't realize that even if they got charged with crimes, they feel boxed in, like, "I'll never get a job. I'll never be anything." That is incorrect, because I'm standing right here to let you guys know that I graduated here, I got my GED, and I graduated right here at FTCC in 2014. I walked across the stage at the Caverceum, and I'm a convicted felon, okay? I graduated with my associate's degree in automotive technology, and what I did with that was I opened up a business, which I still have today. So, there are other roads to take. I want to be a tool again. I want to help that young person and let him know that your life's not over. You know, I came from a broken home. My father was an alcoholic, very abusive, and that's what led me to becoming a gang member. A lot of, I want to protect that gang member, and I want to protect that innocent person on the street. I want to see if I can make that gang member change his mind, maybe get a pen and a book instead of a gun and a knife. That's my intent. That's what I want to do here, and the way to do that is prevention. We need prevention. Somebody has to talk to them. They are not going to talk to the police. No way, no how. That's not going to happen. I believe that I can help. I believe that if they will listen to my story and see how I came about, how I made it out of that and became successful, I believe that encouragement will change their minds about what they're planning on doing tonight on the corner, or who they're going to rob, or whose house they're going to break into. That is my intention right now to do, and I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ms. Savonia Akins. Ms. Akins. Not present. Mr. Jesse Brown. Jesse Brown.
Good evening, City Councilors and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Allen, 445 Rollingwood Circle, Fayetteville, District 2. I recently moved here from the Front Range of Colorado, and I thought it would be nice to see a river again. But as much as I love running along the Cape Fear River Trail, I don't like to drink from the water from it because it's contaminated. Concerned about Fayetteville's history with PFAS contamination, which research by academics and manufacturers themselves shows is linked to cancer, liver damage, birth defects, and other health problems, I got my own tap water tested by an independent EPA-approved lab. Now, the EPA has health advisory levels for PFAS, the level at or below which adverse health effects are not anticipated to occur. My levels were 1,000 times the EPA's health advisory levels issued June 2022. That was 1,000 times for PFOA, a main kind of PFAS, and 385 times the level for PFOS, another kind. I live in the heart of Fayetteville, and I know my tap is not unique. I know I'm just the latest resident of Fayetteville to voice these concerns, but anyone who moves to Fayetteville is just as shocked by this contamination as those who started fighting against the polluters years ago. I know the city doesn't regulate or punish polluters, but you have a say. Please, talk to your counterparts up and down the river and ensure they stop all sources of leakage into the river, which can be as simple as policing up a landfill or knowing where they dump firefighting foam. Dialogue with the league of municipalities, just anyone who will listen. The EPA continuously updates its guidance on PFAS, and currently only has these unenforceable health advisory levels. In 2016, that level for PFOA was 70 parts per trillion. As for this year, it's .004 parts per trillion, or almost 20,000 times less. At this rate, the next guidance may very well be an enforceable regulation, which may cost hundreds of millions of dollars for our city to meet. Will Fayetteville be caught by surprise when the hammer falls, or will our city act now, have a dialogue now and continuously, and save lives in the meantime? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Eva Stills. Ms. Eva Stills. Not present. Ms. Angela Tatum-Malloy.
I had a whole lot that I was going to say about the ShotSpotter and thinking that the council was genuinely interested in hearing from the citizens, giving them an opportunity to be heard so that there could be a reconsideration of the signing of this contract. But as our city manager alluded in his comments earlier, it's already decided that when it's signed, our concerns will be taken into account. What I find frustrating is that the mayor and others, but especially the mayor, because he stayed afterwards in hearing some of the citizens, it was, you allowed the citizens to feel like there was a chance or an opportunity for this to be reconsidered. I asked you over and over again to state in front of everyone to let them know that this has already been decided. We're just hearing you. It's just a checkbox of, you know, hearing from you, but we've already decided to move forward. My question is, why wasn't this forum, these forums called before even taking the vote? I'm not understanding why they didn't take place. There were plenty forums to get citizens to vote on the referendums that you wanted, you know, to be supported or not supported, and so why the same energy was not put towards this? I spoke with some of the community members, and I don't like wasting my time. I have a huge project. I have many things on the works. I don't have time to waste. I don't like wasting time, and I feel like public, you know, comments, public forums, community forums, it's a waste of our time because you're not going to take into account what the citizens are, you know, asking and trusting that you're going to do. The decisions are already made. The community forums are always just checkboxes, and that's what needs to be told to the community, that, you know, we're going to do what we want. We will hold these forums so that you can feel like you're being heard, but at the end of the day, the decisions are going to be made. There were people there that were depending on an opportunity to convince, hopefully, with the statements, that there would be reconsideration, you know, pushing it to January. Mayor, you said that it needed to have more to, you know, postpone this. I have not known a project or program that has been funded $200,000 to have as many flaws that has been shown and proven as ShotSpotter. So, we'll just have to move on to something else.
Ms. Ashley Bruce. Chaplain Lee Grimsley. Chaplain Lee Grimsley. Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council. Hello. My name is Jose Cardona. I will leave a table, a spot on my table for this New Year, excuse me, for the Christmas and the 24th, for any of you to attend my house. You're more than welcome. I live at 233 Addison Street. I live at 233 Addison Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Today, I come on behalf of the police department, believe it or not, my heroes and the fire department. And if you are going to go forward with this shot fire item, I am requesting from the city council and for the new police officers to have three police officers every time they call out on a shot fire accident. I do not want to be in front of you the next time I see you and say that a police officer has been killed because this damn, excuse me, because this thing went wrong. Please, listen to my boys. Three individuals in each squad car to go to any of these positions. Faith, faith, pride, and dedication. Anybody heard that before? That is the police officer motto of the city of Fayetteville. I wanted to change, I wanted to change to say dedication, protection, and transparency, please. We need police officers that you could talk to. We need police officers that would back up, back us up. We need police officers that would be there when we need them, like I have before, when I had people break in my neighbor's house across the street from me, and I had to pull my own gun. Mr. Hewitt, I am one of those individuals that you was talking about last time you was here, about sharing garbage cans and all that stuff. I share my neighbors. I got six of them that are older than me, about 10 years. I take out the garbage, I pick up the garbage for them. I do everything for them. I also use the garbage can. And I cannot see them getting in any way, shape, or form hurt because their police officer went and got hurt. They depend on the police officers, especially I do in this city. I also want to talk to you about, real quick, about the bond forward. The bond forward, everything was going good. Everything was going good November, the beginning of November. I have brand-new streets in my neighborhood, haven't had them for 45 years. Sidewalks, bicycle paths, I don't care for them, but we have them anyway. So all of a sudden, it stopped. Where, what happened? Now we got the bond, we have money from the, from the budget, $248 million, right, Mr. Hare? What happened? Everything stopped.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona.
I thank you very much for having me.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, 624 Golden Rain Drive. Cancel ShotSpotter. Take the $200,000 that you plan on wasting and pour that back into socioeconomic programs for the black and brown folks who live in the three-mile radius you plan on overpolicing. Here's the data the ShotSpotter reps missed in their canned sales pitch. One out of every five people in Fayetteville lives in poverty. Our poverty rate of 19.1% is around 66% higher than the national average. Mass incarceration and overpolicing further destroy our communities. Our people don't need to be overpoliced. They need their basic needs met. Cancel ShotSpotter and put our taxpayer dollars to use finding solid upstream solutions. Repeal the no camping ordinance that was always a coded way to criminalize the city's most impoverished. Criminalizing the unhoused will never make sense, and it is among the worst decisions you all have made as a council. Offering vouchers after handing out tickets and court summons was ass, bass ackwards at best. Thank you to Councilmember Banks McLaughlin for challenging this when it came up both in 2020 and a few months ago. Repeal the no camping ordinance and challenge yourselves to do something more humane than assessing fines and penalties on folks who can't even afford shelter. We're repeating a call for the council to approve the creation of the Office of Community Safety. For the voters watching, the five council members who voted against establishing the infrastructure for independent oversight and mental health response to mental health crisis are Mayor Mitch Coven and council members Dawkins, Hare, Jensen, and Thompson. Incidentally, all of them voted for ShotSpotter as well. Don't just do it because it's rudimentary and common sense police reform. Do it to avoid the next Jelana Dunlap. Establish the OCS to honor those who have lost their lives to police homicide here in Fayetteville. Jada Johnson, Justin Lussey, Najee Higgins, Lawrence Graham, Joshua Oxendine, Trevor Smotherman, Kevin Grissette, Shakir McNair. And nearing the one-year anniversary of his murder, I implore you to do it for Jason Walker. To the public, what do we get for our vote? Please don't just listen to what these politicians say during election season. Watch what they do and hold them accountable for every vote. Watch how they vote, and therein you'll find indicators of how much they truly care about us and our families. Watch what they do.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chilenko Hurst. Mr. Chilenko Hurst? Mr. Lee Sadler?
Good evening, Mr. Sadler.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, city council. As I said when I voted for you folks, I was going to hold you accountable, and that's why I'm here tonight. I live in the 8th district, as we talked about on Thursday. And I, I feel somewhat disenfranchised. I know Courtney's my representative. I didn't look into how she may have voted for ShotSpotter. I didn't look, I didn't, I wasn't even aware of the ShotSpotter program until two weeks ago. It's not that I don't keep my eye on city politics. It's just that I kind of rely on you people and your expertise to step up. First question I want to ask you is, do you run your meetings using Robert's Rules of Order? It's a yes or no question. Because if you do, the main motion that I'm speaking about tonight is the ShotSpotter program. And I'd like you to make, I'd like one of the council members to make a motion on that main motion of ShotSpotter. I'd like it to be seconded. And I'd like the second to be the postponement or reconsideration to extend debate on the Shot, ShotSpotter program. That's, and for further discussion, to rescind or amend your current vote, unless you've already taken that vote. Personally, I think that $200,000 could be better spent. I don't know what police recruitment is like right now in the city, but I do know that $200,000 perhaps would be better served by hiring four police officers or five, not knowing what the salary range is, to supervise and control that same three-mile radius without ShotSpotter. I think it would be a better publicity program for the city. Definitely uphold the police force and our respect for them. I had called on Thursday for a special meeting. I thought that it was seconded at the, as we were standing in the hall discussing it. I later learned that that's not the fact. That was a little bit disheartening. So I'm going to, I'm, I'm not a member of the council, but I would like to call a, a point of order, Mr. Mayor, to kind of extend to the other districts who were not represented, at Smith Center and at Kiwanis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sadler.
Ms. Cynthia Leaks?
Good evening, Ms. Cynthia.
How's everybody doing? Thank you for, this is my first time, or maybe second time addressing, but like Ms. Tatum, I had lots to say on the spot, the ShotSpotter. Two weeks ago, I just found out about it myself. So I'm not going to stand up here and say the same thing I said on the first night of the meeting because I think you already know my position, but I support all of those who came up to the microphone to speak against this spot shatter because we did not get an opportunity to voice our opinion about it. You're taking my tax dollars and you're spending it on something that you decided to do. And in one night, one hour, it, it was just, I wouldn't have paid for it if I had the money in my pocket the way it came across to me. But since then, I left, giving it the benefit of the doubt. Goldsboro, I tried to reach out to Goldsboro, see the police. They, they've had it since 20 something, 17. Didn't get a response, but I did talk with one of our 911 operators. The folks who represent that company say that when you hear a shot, in 60 seconds, the police department will, it, it's my understanding, the police department will get, within 60 seconds, the police department will get the call. The 911 operator tells me that already happens. So it kind of surprised me, why are we kind of spending this kind of money when we can, you know, be doing some of the things that the gentleman named? I say we flip a couple of houses and put some police officers in our communities. That's what, you know, the private citizens are doing that have the money. They're flipping houses and they're Airbnb. Hey, let's put some police officers in our community. And I'd like to piggyback on what the last gentleman said. Extend this debate on shot, on, on this ShotSpotter, please. I, I don't, I think it will marginalize my community, and I live in the heart of the city. I hear shots sometimes, too. I may not dial 911 because they're not close enough for me to tell the police officer where they are. You know, I can only point, I can only point like your spot, your ShotSpotter is going to do. It's going to point, you know, cop to the spot, cop to the spot. I was listening. But I just, I repeat, I don't think it's for Fayetteville. I implore that you please let us come before you again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Leaks.
Our final speaker is Ms. Jeanette Henderson.
Ms. Henderson, good evening.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too am here about the ShotSpotter technology. And as the other three or four speakers pointed out, of course, that was, it's something that I don't support. Quite frankly, I feel like we could use that money to invest in some other solutions. And Mayor Coven, you and I had the opportunity to talk about that briefly on Thursday in terms of what that looks like and how we can be proactive versus being reactive. I think we spend a lot of money in terms of reactionary processes, and we need to start moving forward to doing something to change the community, change the culture of this acceptance of, you know, violence in our community. We need to diminish that as much as we possibly can. I too am a bit concerned about maybe being made a promise or understanding that we were going to have some type of special meeting to further this conversation. I think the meetings that were held, especially the one that was held at the rec center over in Seabrook, that, that meeting, we had 11 minutes to ask questions. And you could literally see the representatives from the ShotSpotter Technology Company actually filtering through which questions they wanted to ask. And on two occasions, none of my questions were asked. On Friday, I think they got to them because it was Zoom. They couldn't see who was asking the question. So my questions, some of them were answered. But again, I do think that we need to reconvene, reconsider, and take the, the comments and considerations from the general community. We really want to have this discussion with you all. Hope that you make the best decision possible. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
May we have no further speakers?
All right, and thank you to all the speakers. And just to kind of recap, there were a few things that were, that were mentioned. And Ms. Henderson, I'm glad you did mention that your questions, I did agree to make sure that those, those questions got answered. But in addition to what's been discussed tonight, I, I would like to just remind the general public that the council has moved on. Mental health co-response, thanks to some of the, the great work and passion that members of, of our community have brought forth at the public hearings, that we're working on that. $250,000 is available for at-risk youth mitigation, proactively to work with nonprofits or those in the community that have ideas to help us on the front end of this, of this problem. So there is money available through community and economic development for that, and we encourage you to do it. Our Violence Interrupter Programs, which has been very successful, getting members of the community to come and to apply for these micro grants to do various things, to help keep some of our most vulnerable or highest population or, or our young people out of, out of, off of the path that would eventually lead to either violence as a, as a victim or violence as a perpetrator. But, so there are things that the council is doing in addition to what you've heard tonight. I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And if these things can be found on the city's website, or you can reach out to us individually, and we'll provide the information. But we encourage partnerships through our Community Economic Development Department, as well as any other ideas that the public has so that we can make sure that next weekend, we're not reading five different locations that people have been shot or lost their lives in the city of Fayetteville. So thank y'all for your passion. I think we all have the same goal in mind. Moving along, council, to the public hearing. At this time, we'll read the rules of the public hearing. Public hearing, individual's desire to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by naming the address before 7:00. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case that spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Again, please clearly state your name and address for the record, and you may then address the city council. You will be notified at 30 seconds, and then at the conclusion of your time, the timer will ring. So at this time, we'll call our member of staff to come forward to talk about item 9.01. Mr. Colley?
Evening, Mayor, City Council, Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. So Mr. Van Gheens is going to give this presentation. We're going to talk a little bit about the equity venture capital. All right. Let's pull it up real quick, bear with me.
All right, there we go. Well, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I, I will be brief. Long story short, increasing the amount of business done locally when it comes to procurement has been a goal of this council for a number of years. After all the good work of getting special legislation, the building business rallies, analyzing our supply chains, what you found, though, is that we don't have enough locally-owned companies that can do business serving our government institutions. When it comes to minority-owned, to black-owned businesses, we have even fewer. And so that kind of led to a conversation of how can we break the standard paradigm? And how can Fayetteville lead that national conversation? And today, hoping to bring a piece of that forward for your review and potential support, we were able to secure $2.5 million of funding from the state. Senator Kirk Devier actually helped substantially with that. It does require a match, and these funds would be used to address the historic barriers of funding for small minority-owned businesses, where we would provide patient capital. I think a good example is you might be providing interior painting services today. How does your company buy the paint truck you need to get up to the second floors there? You might get an IT contract from- You might get an IT contract from PWC or the hospital. How do you acquire the servers and pay your staff in that time from contract day one to the final day of completion and then that first payment? We've heard from some local business owners, they sold trees off their family land just to try to make it through to that payment. And that's what these funds would be doing. It's patient capital and equity. We are targeting to help ten small minority-owned companies grow by ten employees or more each within five years. This would be administered by our nonprofit arm, the Community Development Foundation, working along with partners. The CDF is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It'll be handling close to ten million dollars in projects in the next two to three years, assuming we move forward with this one. To receive funds, the company must be established within the state of North Carolina. If they don't have a business plan, our partners can help them develop one. And then ultimately, first priority will be given to businesses owned by residents who live in low to moderate income census tracts. Second priority to those that operate within and employ individuals from those census tracts. We are initially starting with focusing on companies that can serve a public need, that can keep local dollars local and provide those goods and services to our institutional partners. Companies will be required to create a certain number of jobs in order to have the debt forgiven. Otherwise, they would have to repay it. I think there's just really, in closing, all income and disbursements will be tracked accordingly. There will be a loan committee that will include city, county, and nonprofit staff, and all expenses will be, and a project summary was sent to the city for each of these proposed projects as we go forward. It is likely members of your finance team, your community development, and possibly your legal team will be part of that decision process. If approved, these funds would be restricted. The only places they can go would be where the loan committee deems appropriate after review, or back to you would be the only two options for us on those funds. Again, it's a two and a half million dollar allocation from the state. We have to raise the same amount of money locally. We're respectfully requesting you consider one point two-five million dollars towards this tonight. We've made the same request of the county. And if all goes well, come January, we'll be able to launch, really as I understand it, the nation's first publicly-backed economic equity venture capital fund. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Van Gheens. Councilmember here, you had a question?
Thanks, Mayor. Roberts, you always bring us good news, so thank you, sir. Is this item, you know, last week, we had the disparity study. A lot of things that disparity study talked about related to this concerning our small business team and how we are going to support that part of our community. Is this in relation to, and let me finish it all first, is this in relation to the disparity study? And the reason that I ask this is because they were asking for certain things that they needed also from the council. So are this, are they, are these two working together?
This was, they aligned perfectly. This was something we started talking about as you were doing it. It is something I talked with your consultants who were doing the study on that they thought was a great program. This is in keeping with all of that. And this is to provide capital to those who today can't, you know, we all say businesses fail because they don't have the reserves necessary. This provides that interest, that non-interest-bearing patient capital, so it directly supports the outcomes of the disparity study.
And the reason, and the reason I'm asking, because I don't know if I'm really getting, getting that full answer, is because they were requesting like a staff member, if I'm not mistaken, so that's going to be, if I'm not mistaken, that's, that's a budget item. And, and then you, what you're asking for here, which is, of course, the one point two-five mil. So I'm trying to see if they are in related, because if they, if this group is going to be, be doing this venture, what is it that the disparity, our purchasing group folk are going to be doing? And, and then I have another question.
I can take that one, sir. They are unrelated. They're, they're unrelated. We would hope to be able to work with Robert to grow the capacity of any businesses locally or to recruit them. And those are all the things in it, but what Ms. Toon is doing, it is unrelated at this moment to, to that item.
So, so, so we're going to, so we're asking our purchasing group to do this, and then this venture to do this, too?
No, the item before you tonight is to allow us to see if possible to set this program up in place for the reasons that Robert stated. We can come back and have, and we'd actually promised, I think, to do that, to have a separate conversation with everybody about the disparity study.
Yeah, I would. My last question, Robert, is how are the small groups, the small minority groups, going to be chosen?
We will actually be going out, we're already working with FSU and the hub, and we'll be, we have dollars in this to advertise it. We will be pursuing any local company, minority-owned business, that can be a supplier to the city, the county, the hospital, those institutions. So if they fall within that criteria, if they're not ready for this funding stream, we will work with our partners at SEED and FSU and to help them get ready. And when they're ready, they'll be able to take advantage of this. My hope is that we have too much interest, but I'll be honest with you, it's going to take some time to grow up. If it was easy to get there, you know, we, we would have already probably thought of this before today. But I don't see us, we won't be turning folks away if they meet those criteria.
Well, my only concern is, as we move forward, if we're asking to do that tonight, is that if we're already having this conversation through our purchasing and what we're asking them to do, and then they're also working with the folk at the hub, just like they are, are we spending it twice?
Yeah, it's two different things. The council, I'm going to open up the public hearing because we hadn't, hadn't done that yet, and then we'll, we'll get some of the questions. But councilmember here, I think what you're talking about, the disparity study showed there was point zero six percent of minority, black, of black businesses that do business with the city government. And so purchasing is coming back with a plan to address that disparity, that underutilization. But I think what Robert is, is more of a general concept to say, any minority, small-owned business that's uncapitalized, undercapitalized, there's a grant from the state if this is matched, that will help grow at least ten of those test businesses. Is that correct?
That, that's where we're starting with, the first ten. And it's complementary, not connected. To those businesses that will help move that percentage up, we hope to fund them from this capital fund.
So that may apply across the board, whereas the other one was a little bit more specific with doing business with this, with the city.
Correct.
Does sound good. You know, we're all about supporting our, our black business.
Oh, all right. And, and, you know, it included all, all of the classifications that Kim Toon had given in, in the, in the report. So with that, council, I'll open the public hearing, and then we'll, we'll make way, Madam Clerk, if there are any speakers?
No, sir.
All right. So closing that, Mr., well, Mr. Van Gheens, I did have, I had a question, and Councilmember Jensen had a question as well. So the matrix that you use to what defines success, okay? I think that you're saying the goal is ten firms by ten or more employees. To grow ten firms by ten or more employees is the matrix that you're using?
Yes, create a hundred new jobs.
Okay. And so what are the, not seeing the rules of what the state has given, what are, what are the rules for the city's contribution that, that you'll give us back, the things that you'll do, the do-outs that we can expect? So you're saying that you'll grow ten businesses by ten jobs that fit into this category, but have you provided staff the, the criteria as to what the, the city's participation looks like?
And city staff will be part of the loan committee on each of these. And I'll be frank with you, is each company is going to be a little bit different based on its needs. And that's where we start with, can they serve the city? Can they serve the county? And we look at their cap.
So I guess, I guess my point is, so, so the process that you're using when you find these, these, these businesses, you'll have a loan committee that'll include members of city staff, or who? How does that, how does that look?
Members of city staff, members of county staff, local advisors and business advisors, and some private, private sector companies that'll help mentor these companies. We'll work through with them to find what their capital need is and how we can structure something to get them where they can achieve and provide these services.
And do they give them the, the other support they need besides capital? So if they, if I come and I have two employees, but you're going to grow me to twelve employees, I may need more than capital, I may need some infrastructure. Is it, is that a part of it?
Absolutely. And that, and that is, and I, maybe I cut that on the point of, for brevity tonight, but throughout the process, the, their investment back is participation, counseling, transparency with the committee and the support group. Our goal is to cradle them, and that's one of the other reasons why we're starting and beneficial to work with local supplying opportunities, because you want this, too. And so we're going to see them through that entire early stage, through completion and growth, and hopefully they'll be back in the future as we grow this fund to come back and do more.
Got you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, what I want to say is thank you, because I know that this has been a long haul, and it hasn't been something that just dropped into your lap. And there was paperwork, and there was things that needed to be done at the state, and you had to work with our delegation to make this work. And, and if I'm not mistaken, this is probably one of the first times that something like this has ever happened for us here in Cumberland County. So with that being said, you know, for the, for the public out there to realize that we're talking about two point five million dollars that we are going to get to help our small businesses. And what we learned during COVID is people, to expand your business, and anybody in business will understand this, when your debt ratio does not do well in the way interest rates are right now, it is hard to get that business loan to grow your business. When you cannot grow your business, you cannot put in employees or you cannot pay for them. So I really didn't have much to say, but thank you for, for keep on moving on to get this to us. It is a new day for us. I think we learned a lot during COVID, and we are just adding on to helping our, our businesses grow. And for people in business to know how big this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Mahandros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Van Gheens. Thank you for that. This works in conjunction. This is some of that collaboration, cooperation we're talking about. One of my happiest days in Fayetteville outside of my, my personal and familial life was that hub ribbon cutting at Fayetteville State, the Fayetteville Cumberland Regional Entrepreneur Hub, where they talked about helping small entrepreneurs scale up. And the disparity study, this is all working together. The disparity study is the why, it's the what. So it, it verified what we thought, which was there is this disparity in the contractors that the city uses. This is the, this is the how. This is going to help those small entrepreneurs, minority-owned, scale up to be able to provide the services the city's need, if I'm understanding correctly. Ms. Toon, correct me, or Robert, if I'm wrong.
We are trying to create a virtuous circle here and bring all these tools together to create synergy.
So this is, as I understand it, this, you're going to be a partner with the hub to help those, that's where the capital comes in. So with that, I move that we approve this.
I'll circle back to you, Councilmember Mahandros. You had a statement, Mr. Manager?
In making the motion, before one is made, city attorney and I need to share with council that we need to add in the addition of working with the city attorney to get clearance on some of the outstanding legal issues before I'm authorized to sign the contract.
Well, we know we want it to be a legal document.
Well, that's not in the motion on the screen. That's what I wanted you to recognize.
So we'll come back for that, for that. Councilmember McNair? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you for considering our community, our African-American community for business assistance. But I have a question. You mentioned that you would fund a business that has ten employees or more. So do you have a plan for, so to speak, mom and pop businesses that have less than ten employees?
Here, this would be to grow them up to at least ten, to grow them by ten or more. So if they exist, have one or two people today, they'd be a perfect applicant, as long as they're established. If they're not established yet, some of our partners would help them get established. So this would be for those one-to-two-to-three-person companies, hopefully grow them to fifteen or twenty.
Can you explain established?
That they, that they are registered with the state of North Carolina, and they are doing some form of business, that they exist as an entity.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Van Gheens, I'm glad that a lot of us are thinking the same way, thinking that this collaboration between the disparity treatment and the Fayetteville State Hub and, and all this is working together. But as we recollect back to what Ms. Toon was saying, I think a lot of the problems with the black-owned businesses that couldn't get employment through the cities was because of insurance. Will this funding help with their insurance needs?
Yes, it'll provide resources for them to be able to achieve that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Councilmember Mahandros.
The motion?
Yes, yeah, well, council, city attorney, want to make sure we have a legal motion.
Yes, sir, I just gave it to Councilmember Mahandros.
I move that we authorize the city manager to work with the city attorney's office to ensure the program is compliant with state law prior to executing the contract.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Mahandros, I think it was seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Discussion on the motion, got a lot of chatter over here. All right, all right, council, look to you for your votes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
You said what now?
Green.
Oh, okay. She's on, hey, councilmember.
Good afternoon, well, good evening.
All right, Madam, Madam Clerk, all right, that is nine zero. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Van Gheens. Item nine point oh-two, public hearing on consideration for renaming Providence Street to JP Swinson Street.
Good evening. Chester Green, Senior Planner for Development Services. This is case number, I'm sorry, I think the slide's wrong, it's SN twenty-two dash zero zero two, not one, I apologize. It's for the consideration of the renaming of Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. County staff received the request from somebody to rename Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. The reason for this street change request was to honor the legacy of an extraordinary man that contributed so much to his community. County staff contacted the owners that had bought Providence Street. Twenty-eight property owners were contacted, and the majority agreed. This is the subject street. The county evaluated the petition. They found no conflicts or duplications with the proposed name, and they recommend approval of the name change.
All right. Thank you, sir. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers signed up to speak in opposition. The first speaker is Ms. Beverly Smith.
Good evening, Ms. Smith.
My name is Beverly Smith-Lusane, and I own the property at twenty-seven oh-five Providence Street. My parents purchased that property in nineteen seventy-three. We have owned it since then. I stand in total disagreement with changing the name of the street from Providence Street to JC, JP Swinson Street. It's nothing personal against Reverend Swinson. I'm sure he was a very nice man. However, the initial notice that we received stated that the members of the church wanted to change the name of the street to reflect his name because of the work that he's done in the community. Unfortunately, I don't recall a lot of work being done in that community by anyone, even the city. And honestly, we are probably the only owners left in that community that still live there. My nephew lives in the home that my parents own, that I own now. Most of the houses are rental properties, and so I'm sure the people that own those properties don't have an interest in the street. And if you drive through there, you can kind of tell that not many people are interested in that, in that community. There are many ways to honor an individual without inconveniencing that particular community. When you change a street name, the people that reside on the street have to change their ID, their mailing address, they have to change everything, and then the city has to change maps, the county has to change maps, and so does the state. It's a lot. There are lots of ways to honor an individual other than changing the name of a street in that particular community. If, I feel like if the church wanted to honor Miss Reverend Swinson, they could adopt the street and clean up the community. It does need a lot of cleaning up. We try to do the best that we can, but we're only one owner and the only owner of any property in that community. So respectfully, you know, no, nothing personal against Reverend Swinson or the church. I just think that it's a grave inconvenience. I just think that it's a grave inconvenience to my nephew and anybody else that has an interest in the community to change all of the information. The paperwork needs to be changed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our next speaker is Mr. John Hart.
Mr. Hart, good evening, sir.
Members of the council, I don't do a lot of public speaking, so I'm going to read a prepared statement. Good evening. My name is John Hart. I live on 2705 Providence Street. I've lived there since 2005, 2006. I moved on Providence to be closer to my grandmother, who was having some health challenges at the time, as well as being a widow due to my grandfather that passed. We were very close and it was common knowledge that I was her favorite grandson. So when the time came when she could no longer live alone, it was decided that she would go live with my Aunt Beverly, who you just met. At that time, I lived directly across the street from her. One day she called me over and we had a discussion that came from left field for me. During the conversation, she told me that she wanted to leave her house to me. I knew that my grandmother loved me, but that just left me almost speechless. Love for me is an action word and her actions that day spoke volumes beyond anything that I could comprehend. I moved into her house in 2007 and have been there ever since. I have not, I have been on the street longer than anyone else to my knowledge. I know that Pastor Swinson, he was a good person. He was always nice and friendly. I have nothing negative to say about him. However, I do oppose the naming of the street after him. To my knowledge, no one in the church has ever provided any community outreach or involvement. More than that, none of the church members live on Providence to my knowledge or even in the neighborhood. But they would like to change the name of the street that they have no investment, you know, little to no investment in the community, other than going back and forth to church. I'm not sure whether they've considered the financial burden on the residents on that street in terms of changing our driver's license, changing our financial information, changing our billing information. I feel it is very bold to make changes in a community that you have little to no investment in. So that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right. So that I'll close the public hearing. I did have a question for staff. Mr. Colley, oh, Mr. Green. The county's letter says 28 property owners were contacted and the majority agreed. But the statements that they're saying is that they weren't. So how do we, do they, did they give any kind of verification about the census that they took?
I mean, they gave us a list of all the property owners, the same ones they mailed letters to about the public hearing. But they reach out to all the individual property owners. And if more than 50% of the majority say okay, then they move it forward.
Did they do a poll to show who, how many agreed, how many disagreed? They're saying?
No, that wasn't them.
Kind of a vague statement.
They just provide that they, their policy is that if the majority say okay, then they move it forward.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Thompson and then Jensen.
Thank you, sir. I just have one question. What community watch, what community services was done on that street for you to choose that street to change the name on, other than the location of the church?
Staff didn't choose anything. Somebody makes a petition to the county that lady's name in there. Or the church makes a petition to the county. The county then reaches out to all the property owners. And as long as a majority of the property owners say that they don't, aren't opposed to it, then they move it forward, which then comes to city council for the ultimate decision.
So the church didn't choose Providence Street?
The, if the church is the one that made that lady vow to, yes.
The way the process runs is an applicant can submit for a street to be renamed. They can reside on their street or they cannot reside. They can just pick a street at random. The county does verification and sends out letters to, to the public and gets information. There needs to be some kind of connection and the county does send out information. If nobody opposes it, then they send it to us and we do the public hearing at this time. And the staff then, staff does give the public a chance to voice their opinion as these two individuals did tonight.
I have a question for Mrs. Hart. Is that correct? Mrs. Beverly Smith? Can you tell me, why did you think the church chose your street? Is that the only reason? If they've never?
Yes, the church is at the end of the street. Reverend Swinson is no longer alive. And he was the pastor of the church, you know, before he passed away. I don't know when he passed away. I don't know if he was an active pastor. We've just got to notice that they want to change the name of the street.
Can you speak into the mic, ma'am?
Point of order, I don't think it's appropriate to ask the citizen to speculate on what the applicant, the church did.
But they're not here, so.
Hold on. Had a public hearing, so she was a signed up speaker for the public hearing. So we're at the point now where we're finding out more information. So we understand that she can't speak to the mindset of anyone.
Right. Sir, the church is, Reverend Swinson was the pastor of the church that is on the end of the street. I don't know who came up with the idea to change the name of the street. And that's the only reason I could think, sir, that they would want to name it JP Swinson Street is because he was the pastor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, he's no longer alive. Okay.
But it's all speculation, so we don't know. Who was the applicant? Mr. Green? Was it the family? Was it a? Policy owner? I mean, a property owner?
It was Ms. Aiken.
Did it have her address?
I do, no, I mean, they didn't provide it in, county doesn't provide the person's information in their letter.
Okay.
I mean, we can.
All right. Councilmember Hare, did you have a question? Was your question addressed? All right, Councilmember Benevente.
This might be a question for our city staff. In the past, I believe Fayetteville State University wanted to rename a street to Bronco Boulevard or something of that nature. And there were some concerns about the cost and the impact it would have on the community members of that street. What sort of financial support did we offer that community? Or what do we propose?
In terms of?
Financial support as it relates to the impact of having a street name changed?
Well, for the actual individual, we do not provide any support to the individual such as what the resident was stating about having to change ID and stuff like that. Now, we have talked to the street department and they do go and change the road signs for free and things like that.
And just to be clear, so when it comes to that other situation with Bronco Boulevard, we're not really doing anything for those community members either?
That matter hasn't come before the council for a public hearing yet.
All right. Council, any other questions, comments? All right. Some action is needed on this item for consideration or can be tabled.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question for the, for the people out on the street. Did the church ever reach out to you?
Earlier, my father died in 2001. My mother lived there alone. And I promise you, ma'am, I've been there, I lived there since 1973. I don't recall any outreach. I just don't recall. We've been there all that time. We've owned that property all that time. I don't recall.
So nobody has, nobody has called you and said, we are thinking about doing this?
One of the pastors came from the church and said they want to rename the street.
Okay.
But that's all they said. I didn't give them a direct answer.
So no meeting, no anything?
No. They said they were thinking about it and they told me that Pastor Swinson had passed. But outside that, I haven't had any contact with my mother and seen them drive back and forth to church.
Okay, that's, that's.
And I did want to point out one thing, if I may. The gentleman said 28 owners had been contacted. There are 28 houses on that street.
That's true.
And so just to your point, the city, I mean, that, we did not send out letters. So we are just getting what was told to us.
I'm thinking, I promise you, there's not 28 houses on that street.
I believe you. I believe you. But thank you for your answer to the question.
And thank you for asking.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Benevente?
I'd like to make a motion not to rename.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Thank you, sir.
All right. It's motion to deny. It's motion by Councilmember Benevente to deny out of 9.02, rename consideration for Providence Street, seconded by Councilmember Hare. All right. Discussion on the motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
I have a question, mayor. I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilmember? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Councilmember Benevente, would you be willing to, instead of denying it, maybe tabling it just so that, so that we can get additional information?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It's motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded by Councilmember Hare. Council, I'll look to you for your votes. And this is to deny. So a vote, a vote yes is for denial, kind of opposite. All right, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Grant.
Okay, Madam Clerk? All right. Motion carries 63. Those voting to deny Colvin, Jensen, Benevente, Hare and Dawkins, those voting against denial. Thompson, Mahandros, Banks-McLaughlin and move the list. All right, whoever's left. All right. Out of 9.03, public hearing authorized issuance of private activity bonds. Mr. Colley, back so soon?
Yes, sir. I'm helping lots of folks tonight. So in the audience tonight is Mr. David Mitchell of Good Homes Incorporated. He'd be happy to come over here and talk about your projects if necessary. But this is what's called a TEFRA hearing. It's required by the IRS for the developer to access municipal lending rates. So your memo tells you kind of some complicated stuff about how that all works. I think the key part for council to keep in mind is that approval for his private organization to achieve, to get these bonds has no bearing or impact on the financial disposition of the city. Does not impact our credit and we are not on the hook for those bonds. This is simply a statement saying that these projects would be good for our community. And if council agrees, you authorize the mayor to say so in a document. But we do need a public hearing called a TEFRA hearing in order to do that. So if you'd like to ask any questions of the developer, he's here for that. He flew in in order to talk through that. But if not, you can conduct the public hearing and that's your pleasure.
All right. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
No, we have no speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You had a question?
I'd like to make a motion. A motion to approve, recommend. Madam Attorney, should it be recommend or approve? What's the word I should use?
Recommend.
Motion to recommend the issuance of private activity bonds not to exceed $114 million by the Public Finance Authority relating to two mixed income housing developments located at 1701 Owen Drive and 1944 Cedar Creek Road.
All right. It's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Mahandros. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your iPads. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting. Thank you. Out of 10.01, Night Circus District New Year's Eve Spectacular. It's like Cool Spring group is here. Good evening, ladies.
Hello.
Good evening. Good evening. We see it.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Cool Spring is very excited to have been contracted by the city of Fayetteville to bring back the Night Circus, the District New Year's Eve Spectacular for the second year in a row. We've been very, very busy planning. It is, what, 20 some odd days away? We're getting very, very close. If you missed it last year or if you just want to remember the good times, we have a very short recap video for you. Hopefully, technology will work for me today. Well, this sounds great with the background music of Coolio, All For One, CNC Music Factory, all of the 90s performers that we had last year. It was a great party. It was a great way to kind of come out of COVID. We were very excited to have all of these performers. Just looking at it, it was a really good party. I hope everybody was there or got to see it. And again, a little bit less of an impact without the music, but just in your mind, listen to Coolio, who we are very excited to have had here before he passed away this past year.
It was good, though.
It was good. Nope, that's just on a loop now. There you go. That's okay. Sorry, I've had a terrible technology today. No printers have worked for me, nothing.
All right.
There you go. All right. So the attractions for this year's Night Circus will feature fire performers, aerialists, magicians, carnival games, bounce houses and so much more. And as you can see on your screen over to the right, our beautiful 18 feet LED multi-colored star, a symbol of our city and fabricated by Blashfield Signs, a local business in downtown Fayetteville, will be lifted once again, raised into the night sky as we usher in 2023 with a dazzling fireworks display. We also have engaged with local vendors to create a big top aesthetic throughout the Night Circus.
So as we've mentioned before, the Night Circus itself is based on a novel of the same name by an author named Aaron Morgenstern. It centers around this mysterious traveling circus that just sort of shows up in the night. Cool Spring staff has worked really hard to curate a celebration that brings a little bit of that sort of here today, gone tomorrow, mystery magic to Fayetteville.
And for performers, we are excited to partner again with Imagine Circus and the Airborne Aerialists. The aerialists will perform onstage as they have in the previous year. And the Imagine Circus performers will be roaming around the event footprint throughout the event. As far as food trucks are concerned, within the footprint, we will have about a dozen food trucks, a beer garden with champagne in partnership with Healy Wholesale. And spinning the ones and twos, we will have DJ Beats with DJ Miracle, followed by DJ Tommy G Mix, who will amp up the crowd and keep the party going before our headliners take the stage.
We are very excited to announce our headliners this year, 90s R&B trio, Tony, Tony, Tony. You may be familiar with some of their sound infused with hip hop beats. Earned the group over 14 billboard chart selections, sold over 6 million albums, and they are still played in rotation on radio. and they are still played in rotation on radio stations today. We're very excited to have them. We are adding a few new attractions this year that we are excited about as well. Fayetteville is all about community. Cool Spring Downtown District is all about community, so we wanted to create the opportunity to open the festivities this year with some of our local talent having the opportunity to grace the Night Circus stage. We had an open call for submissions all over everywhere in all of our print publications, all of our social media. Those submissions closed last week, and we'll be reviewing what we received. In addition to that, with our partners, John Brothers, Inc., we will be incorporating a digital video wall with thematic imagery, highlights from last year's circus, and a digital countdown at midnight, which will also include a children's countdown at 9:00 p.m. so that the little folks can still participate in a New Year's Eve celebration before bedtime. Lastly, many of you may be familiar with the Van Gogh Experience that came to Charlotte and Raleigh recently. We are very excited to have engaged a very talented digital light artist whose work has been featured at Raleigh's first night and is currently featured at the North Carolina Museum of Art. She is currently working hard curating a custom immersive experience within the circus, inspired by the Night Circus tale. It will be a tinted experience that you will actually be able to walk through, very much like the Van Gogh Experience itself. Those are all the surprises. That's everything that we're working on. There is going to be light and color and sound. And again, if you heard the music and saw the party, we are just really looking forward to ushering in 2023 with celebration fun for our community.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
So, with that, I will, well, this is not a public hearing item. So, Councilmember Jensen, you had questions? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, great job tonight and a fantastic job last year. I don't know how you're going to top it, but I think you're going to do it, and we appreciate all your hard work. One of the steps of bringing our youth to make sure that they want to come back and have traditions to come back to be with their families on New Year's Eve. So, thank you for allowing families to have a place to go to on New Year's Eve. Couldn't have done it without you. So, with that being said, I would like to make a motion. Do I need to make a motion to receive the report?
All right. It's motion by Councilmember Jensen to receive the report. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hare. Discussion on the motion to receive the report. All right. CNN Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk? Y'all, we're voting on the iPad, guys. All right. All right. He said he's green. Yeah. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Speaking of bringing young people back, I see my middle daughter in the audience tonight, back from Boston, college for the break, so trying to attract you back to participate in some of it. Y'all get on Instagram and whatever you communicate with and tell them to come to this thing on New Year's. All right. Item 10.02, Favel Forward Bonds Next Step. Mr. Lindsey?
Yes, counsel and mayor, it's my privilege to be in front of you and first of all, to just say thank you to the community. We heard from them through this referendum that they overwhelmingly supported the three bond referendums. And one of the reasons we feel like that it was supported is there's an expectation that we're going to deliver on the projects and initiatives that were presented. So, tonight, it's our obligation and a privilege to share with you all, the council, what are the next steps related to these three items? And in particular, to get, if I will, just a little bit of some bumper guidance as we move forward and come back to you in the beginning of next year, if there's any sort of parts to these projects and initiatives that we either need your confirmation that we're in the right direction or possibly some guidance on, so when we come back to you, we're headed in the right direction even quicker. To that end, I want to just lay out very briefly that we have three working groups that we have created in connection with these three projects. And these will be names that you're very familiar with, and I want to ask them to come up in order. So, first, will be Mr. Chris Colley, our Economic Community Development Director, talk about the housing bond. Following his remarks, we'll have Ms. Sheila Thomas-Ambat, who is our Public Service Director, talk about the infrastructure bonds. And then, last but not least, Mr. Rob Stone, our Construction Management and Capital Projects Director on the public safety bonds. Maybe we will skip Chris and come back to him. We'll go first with Sheila, if she's here.
Either one. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sheila Thomas-Ambat, Public Services Director. So, the voters approved about $25 million towards infrastructure. That was a 67% approval, the highest. And we want to thank the community for speaking and for their vote of confidence in us in delivering. The $25 million is currently estimated with the following distribution. I will speak on the street resurfacing component, which is about $15 million, and Mr. Lee Jornigan will speak on sidewalks, the bike plan, and intersection improvements. So, the street resurfacing, as we said, is about $15 million, and we plan to select the streets that will be resurfaced from the city council adopted 2022 pavement condition survey. We plan to bring to this council approximately in February the streets that we anticipate resurfacing. And those streets, as I noted earlier, will be selected from the council adopted 2022 pavement condition survey. We estimate a total of 63 miles of streets, city streets, that will be resurfaced. So, that will be a full resurfacing that will not be using any of the pavement preservation methods that we have discussed with council before. And we probably, we recommend expending funds over a three-year cycle period. So, we expect that we will be able to resurface and use this money over a three-year period. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee Jornigan to speak on sidewalks, the bike plan, and intersection improvements. And then, after that, we'll be here to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. As Sheila has already alluded to, part of the infrastructure bond that was approved included sidewalks, bike plan locations, and intersection improvements. So, the sidewalk breakdown was approximately $8 million, and the locations currently that we would propose would be selected from council's adopted pedestrian plan and some projects that were already located in the council's five-year CIP. That would equate to approximately 14 and a half miles of sidewalk. And just to inform folks on how the pedestrian plan determined the methodology for selection, it was basically connectivity. And you can see that that included schools, commercial centers, and public facilities. Safety and constructability was also a component, because obviously, some things are easier to build than others and less costly. The second component was the bicycle plan. It was also selected, our locations would be selected from council's adopted bike plan. Based on that amount of $750,000, that would do approximately three road miles of bike lanes, and that'd be on both sides of the road. So, a total of six miles of lane. And it was a very similar methodology used there. Connectivity, safety, and improvements to conditions for bicyclists. Lastly, and this is where Adam alluded to, a decision point is our intersection improvement component, which is approximately 1.25 million. Since we, as staff, originally came to council with these breakdowns for the infrastructure bond, we have received additional funding sources from ARPA and state direct grant funds. Those funding sources have funded what we, as staff, would have proposed to you for this geo-bond as it relates to intersection improvements. So, as you see, a note that I have there is those same locations, and my apologies for not including it in the slide, were identified as a part of the pedestrian plan as well. So, the pedestrian plan identified sidewalk locations and intersection improvement locations, focused more so on providing pedestrian accommodations at locations that had a traffic signal. We don't have any remaining signalized intersections identified in the PED plan that have not already received funding on city-maintained streets. The remaining locations would be on NC DOT intersections, and ideally, we would request their involvement to fund those improvements. So, that would be one option for council, would be to reassign those funds or direct staff to seek some additional locations.
Thank you, Mr. Jornigan. Counsel, I did have a question before we move to the next section. So, you said something that kind of piqued my interest. Now, I know with the ARPA dollars, we had used that to accelerate some CIP projects. Then I heard, again now, that you're saying you pulled some of these locations off the CIP projects. When are we going to get the specifics as to which intersections and what areas that we're talking about, just so we can look for any kind of overlap like that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And we can provide that information to council through the manager's office on what locations are funded from ARPA and the state direct grant funds, which totaled 4.3 million. And it was about $3 million in sidewalk and $1 million or so in intersection improvements. We've already begun work on those locations.
Right. But I'm saying, on your new proposed sites, will you give us some details as to where you plan to put the $14.5 million of constructed sidewalk, whatever's remaining from that number you just gave?
Yes, sir. As Sheila mentioned earlier, we were planning to come back approximately February.
All right. Got you.
And this would be included at the same. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay. All right, counsel, any other questions on infrastructure? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jornigan, Ms. Thomas, can you explain to the audience the burden that we discussed last week about putting sidewalks in communities that have swells adjacent to roads and some of the obstacles or burdens that we would come across trying to do that?
Y'all don't want to get out early tonight. So, yes, sir, Mr. Thompson. They're different, and as you see, as part of one of the criteria for selection under the pedestrian plan was constructability. So, typically, either a sidewalk is required to be constructed behind vertical curb and gutter, or either a ditch, something to give the car something to lessen the impact to a pedestrian that's walking on that sidewalk. So, the challenges come in that normally, behind the ditch, there's not rideaway. And so, it would require the procurement of rideaway, which could evolve into a condemnation, which, as you could see, could prolong the delivery of a project. So, at a high level, that would be the constraints that we discussed the other day.
Thank you, Mr. Jornigan.
All right. Keep moving, I guess it would be, what do you need from us, Mr. Manager?
Chris Colley, we found him.
Oh, you did find him.
And then, we also followed by Rob Stone, who's here. Just to, again, kind of level set for the audience and as well as counsel what to expect in February. But given the time, we can be brief. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, we just wanted to come back and talk about, you know, where our housing bonds are going to land in the city, and so that's going to be with my department. We already have housing development programs underway. Just to kind of give you an idea of what we're proposing with the $12 million bond, is to put the lion's share into rental development. So, we know that we have a significant amount of households that are paying too much for rent right now. We know that the Greater Fayetteville Business Journal just did an awesome article talking about the apartment demands in our community at the market rate and at the affordable rate. So, we really need to dig into this hole where our community is growing, and we've got housing development needs that are stacked up. The lion's share of that money goes to about $9 million. These projects that we're looking at doing that are a little bit out of the box from what we've done for the past 20 years, they're going to cost $4 or $5 million in gap financing from the city. So, this lets us take advantage of a couple of those projects that we've never really had the ability to secure before and bring those here. On the single-family side of things, we'd be looking for a development partner to help us build some modest homes for folks to move into, especially new families and early professionals. This would be kind of like construction financing and helping, if there's a gap between the appraised value of the home and what the home actually costs to build, because sometimes, when you're building a modest home, that can be a challenge, depending on the location. Repair and rehab, we already have some pretty awesome programs going in our community. Council allocates about $0.5 million a year to some partners to help low-income folks stay in their houses longer, especially as seniors as they age in place. Most of these programs go to keeping major systems going. So, we'd be looking to help 40 homeowners with rehabs with that $1 million. And then, down payment assistance, so about $1 million bucks to go towards 40 first-time home buyers to help them with that gap financing for down payment assistance and closing costs in order to move into their first home. We are doing some research right now to see if we can bump that number up. Some other cities have moved that up to have a little bit more of a middle-class impact. And so, we're looking to do that as well. But we're doing some research so that we can make sure we follow suit and that the city attorney is comfortable with that approach. A reminder on the rental development projects there is that those are partnerships. They come as we go. We had a really good conversation, maybe about a week ago, with the mayor about this money. And I said, you know, that having this money for the city allows us to go talk to developers who specialize in housing, and it gives us some validity to actually talk to them, kind of like a street cred, right? So, we've got the money to back up what we're talking about now, and that's the real resource that you have allocated for our team. I think that's where we're looking on this one. So, really, we would just be looking for council consensus on this approach. This is consistent with what we've been talking about through our Affordable Housing Study and the Rental Development Program Guidelines we brought in June. We will come back in February to help explain this very complex stuff a little bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Good to see you again. Rob Stone, Construction Management Director. As you remember, so there's a public safety bond. There's approximately $60 million on this. This was the original prioritized projects list. The first one for the police department was a 911 dispatch facility. And for the fire department, we had three fire stations, fire station number 16, number nine, and number two. These were brought forth from the 2019 study for public safety and also with discussions with the fire department and the police department to make sure these were the prioritized items. What we're looking for is, again, with the council consensus and the project prioritization, is this still what council's looking for when you're looking at this bond? The big item is the 911 center. We really need to discuss the options of feasibility with Cumberland County or partnering with Cumberland County with this project and what that looks like. And then, we were looking at returning back to city council in March or April to bring back our plan with that, once we have some direction.
All right. Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stone?
Yes, sir.
Good to hear this news. Just wanted to make sure, because I've been complaining over the years about, I think I'm speaking on five-station nine. Isn't that Santa Fe?
Yes, sir.
So, we're looking for a replacement fire station.
Yes, sir. Looking at it. That one would be replaced. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. It needs to. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Stone, look forward to more detailed discussion. Counsel, with that, take a motion to adjourn?
A move, sir.
All right. Have a good evening.